The time is now 6:30. I'm going to call the session of the Ridgefield City Council to order. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Favella?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay, thank you. May be seated. And Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Counselmember Davis.
Present.
Counselmember Favella, here. Counselmember Wells.
Here.
Counselmember Burkle.
Here.
Counselmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Proton Chipman.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here. Okay. Mr. Stewart, are there any late changes to the agenda tonight?
No late changes, Mayor.
All right, we will move on. We're going to start our meeting off with some appointments. We're especially excited about this one. This has been a long time coming. I'll preface this by saying that this is, the Ridgefield Youth Commission was an idea, I think, that several members of this council have had. It probably goes back at least a couple of years. And we were talking about how we can incorporate more student voices in some bigger decisions in this community and then have some representation there. And so it's our privilege tonight to introduce everybody here who will be prospectively on our Youth Commission. And the way we're going to do this tonight, we have 12 members. Of this 12 members, there will be nine voting members and three alternates, but they have all been selected. They've been through a thorough application process. They've done an extensive interview process we did last week. And so we are very thrilled to have 12 bright young individuals join us on our first ever Youth Commission tonight. And so what I'm going to do is we will, I'll read the names of all the nominations. And then, once we're done with that, we will take a, I will ask the council for a motion. And there may be some discussion, and then we'll have a vote. And then we'll bring up each of the 12, after we do the vote, we'll have all 12 of you come up here to the front. And Ms. Julie will do a swearing in. So there's going to be a swearing in. And after that, we move over to this side of the building over here where we want to do a picture with our full council. So a few things here and there, but we'll get through it all. But again, thank you all for joining us tonight. It's good to see so many people here tonight. So without further ado, it's my pleasure to nominate the following individuals to the Ridgefield Youth Commission. A.J. Truthway, Bella James, Connor Rapp, Easton Quast, Elizabeth Ibarra, Josie Hicks, Okowi Fay, Liam Manning, Xander Earl, Audrey Reed, Carrington Hagan, and Kinley Videnheimer. Counsel, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council accept all 12 nominations to the Ridgefield Youth Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Counsel, is there any discussion on these 12 nominations? Look around.
I, my own, there we go. I just want to thank all of you who have applied. This is a really exciting time. I know I'm excited for this. But also, thank you to your family for supporting you on this new adventure that we have. And I'm extremely grateful that you all are here with your loved ones to accept this nomination and kick off our first Youth Commission.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would echo those sentiments. And just remind you that your initial review, it was a blind review. We didn't see your names. And so, everybody that got this far, all 12 of you, you got here based on your writing and what you stand for and how you represented yourself. And as a teacher, I was actually pretty impressed with a lot of your writing, so nice work. So it's awesome. So I just want to make sure you guys knew that, you know, you got here based on the strength of how you presented yourself. So congratulations.
We'll go to Counselor Hamilton and then Counselor Burkle after that.
Thank you so much. And I wanted to say too to all of you, congratulations, echo every sentiment. I'm the newest one up here, so I can tell you I'm the newest one to this process. And I want you to be really confident in who you are. You got here for a reason. You got here because you have a voice that matters, and we care about it, and we can't wait to hear what you have to say. I like, I wrote a note here, I want to hear all of your voices, your creativity and your abilities to innovate, and I know everyone up here does, and we're really excited. So congratulations.
Great. Counselor Burkle?
I just wanted to say how incredibly proud I am of each and every one of you to step up and become part of what I think is the most remarkable community in Clark County. So thank you, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wells?
I'm going to go a little farther than what Counsel Burkle, it's on, Counselman Burkle went. It's a community, the finest community in the state, instead of just Clark County.
Not biased at all, of course.
Just biased.
I think we're all biased.
Yeah. So, and actually, I've lived here since 1954, so it's been a while. But each and every one of you stepping up, it was a hard decision. There were a lot of good applications, and for us, like, we didn't know, it was all blind. All we could see was what you put down on paper, and no names. And this, you guys moved to the head of the pack, and that's the reason you were chosen.
Thank you, Counselor. And Mayor Proton?
So in, in view of what has been said here, I want to say that this young man right over here does happen to be a nephew, a great, a nephew of my husband's, he is my, a grandson of my husband's sister. But like you said, it was a blind. I had no idea the name, so I don't want anybody to come back later and say, oh, she voted for Liam. But anyway, he's, he's a fabulous kid, but I did not know his name was, I mean, I did not see the name, so I don't want anybody to think that there was any, anything else, anything else going on. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'll just, I'll just close up by adding that, you know, we, we have representation from every grade, from eighth grade through 12th grade on this Youth Commission. And I'm also proud to say we have representation across Ridgefield High School, View Ridge Middle School, and Wisdom Ridge. So a good cross-section of our community, and we're grateful that you're all here and you're embedded in our town and our city and what's happening. And we look forward to you doing great things and coming back to us with some cool solutions here in a few months. So thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call a vote. All those in favor of the motion to accept all 12 nominations for the Youth Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Motion carries. Yep. After that. I would now like to invite all, all 12 members of the Youth Commission up to the front, and Ms. Julie's going to administer an oath of office for you, so you can just line up right here. These are great kids.
You guys ready? If I could please have your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
As a member of the Ridgefield Youth Commission.
As a member of the Ridgefield Youth Commission.
Will serve the city with integrity.
Will serve the city with integrity.
And professionalism.
And professionalism.
I will treat others with respect.
I will treat others with respect.
And kindness.
And kindness.
Lead through active participation.
Lead through active participation.
And work with others.
And work with others.
To make meaningful recommendations.
To make meaningful recommendations.
To the city council.
To the city council.
And to the Ridgefield community.
And to the Ridgefield community.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel and Youth Commission, if you would join us over here on, I guess, my left side of the room over here, we'll do a quick photo, and then we'll let you guys move along.
Okay, so we're going to have to group together in a couple rows, I think, so let's screen. I'm taking a few, and I have a quiet camera. Great, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Our other Youth Commissioners, if you could please join us in the entry room out here, we have something for you to sign and then come back in and learn more about rules and procedure. Thank you. Thank you. No, I'm sitting everywhere. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, our Commissioners have some paperwork to sign to make it official official.
And in the meantime, we're going to move on to public comment. We are inviting the Commission to stick around in their parents because the first order of business we will go through after we do public comment is approval of rules and procedures. So we'll get to that in a second, and then we can dismiss everybody. So let's move into public comment. Let me get my sheet here, hang on one second. Okay, it is now time for a public comment. Anybody wishing to address the City Council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time to the podium or use the raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For controls over the phone, press star nine for raised hand, and press star six to mute or unmute. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Jennings?
My name is Michael Jennings. Last Monday, our former mayor, Ron Onslow, said something very interesting about Ridgefield City Manager Steve Stewart. He said that Steve Stewart gives detailed attention to a huge number of issues. Ridgefield benefits greatly from that. We are very happy we live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience tonight who would wish to give public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Julie, is there anybody online wishing to give public comment?
Not seeing anyone online, Mayor.
Okay, seeing no one, we will close public comment, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Counsel, I'd accept the motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded by Counselor Wells to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion, Counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And our first order of business tonight is a motion to approve the rules of procedure for the Youth Commission. Ms. Notneris, we'll go over to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it appropriate for me as staff to say that? Just gave me goosebumps. I mean, this is kind of exciting.
Entirely.
So yes, so part of the ordinance that was passed by council in September to create the Youth Commission required that council adopt rules of procedure for how the commission would operate. So I want to briefly go through what that looks like today. What is on the screen right now is just the table of contents for the rules of procedure. So these are the topics that are included, and I am going to go through each of them, but not necessarily in that order. I want to come, do it in an order that makes sense. But I just want you to see, I am talking about each of those items. So the first item is, again, a reiteration of what was in the ordinance creating the Youth Commission, is basically the why. The authority and purpose of why Ridgefield has decided to create a Youth Commission. And that is, as determined by council, to assure that youth does have a voice in making decisions on community issues that impact them. Also, to encourage more youth involvement in the Ridgefield community and, you know, kind of learn about how they can impact change in Ridgefield. And lastly, this is also a leadership program, so there are learning opportunities along the way in the tasks that will be performed, like collaboration and leadership and research and those kinds of things, as well as learning more about government and any other training opportunities that the commission may be interested in. So that's the why. Duties and responsibilities, this is basically the, what is the commission doing? In a nutshell, City Council assigns a topic every year, and the topic this year, of course, is e-bikes and e-scooters and all of those e-things that are on the roads. Then the commission determines how they want to approach learning about that topic, researching the topic, getting information from the community and other members of their, of their own age, and making a recommendation to council around that topic. And again, the responsibilities and duties that the city has, as well as the commission members have, is to, in the process, participate actively and learn about how to go through a collaborative decision-making process and come to a consensus on how to present that to council. The who, this basically, this is the membership and organization. There are staff liaisons that will help guide the process for the commission. There are nine voting members and three alternate members. The rules also discuss what happens if there's a vacancy midterm. So if a commission member decides that, for whatever reason, they need to resign, the process is to send a letter to the staff liaison. The council does have the ability to remove a member if they no longer meet the qualifications, which could be they're no longer attending school. That is one of the qualifications of the ordinance. So they're not attending school or they're otherwise not fulfilling their responsibilities as a commission member. If a vacancy happens midterm, and that, the person that resigned or left the commission was a voting member of the commission, then the commission members have the authority to appoint an alternate member to be a voting member. If the vacancy is an alternate member, then the council has the ability to appoint a new member to that position from outside the membership, if you so choose. That is optional. Then, the how. So there are two officers for the commission. One is a chair. The chair responsibilities include working with staff in between meetings to come up with the agenda, what the format of the meeting might look like, what is coming for the next meeting. The chair is also the presiding officer if there is an official vote, and I will talk about voting in detail a little bit later, so hold that thought. And also, if there are activities that are happening in between meetings that need some type of coordination, like the commission members have decided to do a survey, and they need to coordinate how to do that in between meetings, the chair can help with that coordination. There is also a vice chair who will assist the chair in however the chair needs assistance. They are also responsible for taking minutes, and they will be just kind of summary minutes, what happened at the meeting. Meetings are not recorded, there's not official minutes like we have for other boards and commissions. And then also, the vice chair is the presiding officer for official voting if the chair is not available. So meetings, more about the how. Meetings for this commission could look, will look very different. There will be some meetings, if there is official voting, that looks a lot like a council meeting. So they would sit at the dais and use the Roberts Rules of Order and go through official voting. Again, I'll talk about that more later. But there will be other types of meetings that could look more messy, like this other picture, that could be training, it could be team building, it could be brainstorming, it could be trying to come to consensus on a recommendation. And whatever that looks like, and whatever works for this group, could also be the agenda for a meeting. More meetings. The, yeah, there are rules around what they are. Attendance is expected and encouraged, but the rules do not, the proposed rules do not include any specific requirement for attendance or guideline for removal if a commission member's not present. The agenda and format of a meeting is decided by the chair along with staff coordination. Again, there are summary minutes. And then, of course, outside of meetings, there is work that is done, just like with any other board or commission or council. Okay, voting. There are two types of voting proposed in the rules. Official voting. This is basically following Roberts Rules of Order. So it looks like, also for you commission members, it looks like what the council is doing tonight. There are limited requirements for official voting. They do include electing officers, filling vacancies, and voting on the final recommendation that is going to be made to council. For official voting, again, only voting members participate. So the nine members vote. And there needs to be a quorum of those voting members in order for a vote to take place. If, for some reason, there is not a quorum, the chair will appoint an alternate member to be a voting member for that meeting. There are three alternate members, and the way that the individual will be selected at each meeting is with what we're calling a rolling list. So we have created a list of the three alternate members in alphabetical order. So the first time that this occurs, that you need to appoint an alternative member, the chair picks the person at the top of the list. That person then sits as the voting member. They have now fulfilled that responsibility at the end of the meeting. Their name goes to the bottom of the list. So the next time it happens, now it's a different member. If, for some reason, the person whose name is at the top of the list is not present, then they will go to the next person on the list. If someone is not present, so didn't have the opportunity to serve as a voting member, their name does not go to the bottom of the list. It only moves to the bottom of the list after they have had an opportunity to act as a voting member. So that's official voting. Consensus voting is more to keep activity moving. I mean, every, I think everyone has done this. It's kind of a thumbs up. So you're saying, yes, I can agree with this, I'm fully informed, it's not a yes or no, but I think it's the best decision right now. That could be used in brainstorming. So you could say, okay, I think we're done brainstorming. Everyone good? This is the list. It could be used for, okay, we want to do a meet and greet, or we want to do a survey. Everyone good with that? Sure. So making those decisions that are less significant and then can use consensus voting to kind of, just kind of keep things moving. The last thing in the proposed rules is a code of ethics. These topics are based on the code of ethics that were adopted for other boards and commissions, only made more specific for a Youth Commission. But basically, they are representatives of the city, so we'll learn about what that means to protect the public trust and act as representatives of the city. And then some basic act with professionalism, treat others with respect and kindness, be open to new ideas and opinions during the conversations within the commission, provide leadership. Part of that is just by actively participating in all of the activities of the commission. Be a part of looking and creating innovative solutions for the topic area, and then work collaboratively to create an effective recommendation for council. And that is kind of a summary of what all the rules are. I'm very open to questions or suggestions.
Thank you very much. Okay, Counsel, questions for Ms. Notneris at this point? We'll start with Counselor Davis, and we'll work our way down.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to clarify, we figured out that as far as like records retention, open public meeting act stuff, this is set up differently, so we don't have to manage that.
Unless there is official voting, that would be an open public meeting.
Okay, okay. And so are we going to be able to provide those resources to the kids so they know how to manage that?
Yes.
In bounds? Okay.
Yes, that will be part of the learning process, absolutely.
Okay. I'll let the rest go.
Okay, yeah, we'll go through one question at a time, and then we'll come back around for round two. Nothing from Counselor, Mayor Proton?
I'm good.
No question.
Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you. My question would be specifically to you, just how, how can we as a council best support staff in this process to make sure that everyone gets the best experience?
Oh, boy, that's a good question. I think that there will be throughout the process times that we will lean on council for education purposes, like what is local government? How does local government work? And how does the Youth Commission fit into that? As well as, you know, maybe community issues or issues that you're working on now. But I think a lot of there will, will be education. I think it is a good opportunity for the commission members to meet council and have conversations with you about what is happening. Other than that, there may be other things that, as we, we will discover in the process.
Thank you, and thank you for all your hard work on this, too.
Okay. Did you have a second one, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, it was more of a statement to the Commissioners. Do not get lost in voting member, you know, non-voting member. You are a member of this commission, right? Your opportunity to contribute and, you know, drive the group towards a recommendation, everybody is, all 12 of you are going to be on the, on the same level in terms of your opportunity to contribute and the, for lack of a better way of putting it, your status as a member of this commission. So I don't, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear that you guys, all 12 of you are on equal footing when it comes to the official votes. Obviously, that's a little bit of a different situation, but if you're an alternate and you're not one of the people that votes on the final recommendation, that does not mean that you did not contribute to the, that final product and be able to have ownership in that process just as much as everybody else. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Great point, yeah.
Good, good to point out. Counselor Wells?
I've got one comment for you. You have been charged with a tough task. And the tough task is, you're going to have peer pressure, but you need to figure out which is the best for the whole community, whether it's just the young individuals or the old grandpas that are walking up and down the street sidewalk and have the tendency or potential of getting run over. So, so this, that's part of the same, part of the charge that you have. And we need an answer sooner than later. This is a yearly topic. You've got 30 days to come up with an answer. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So, okay, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Favella?
I just want to add for our new Commissioners, I know that relationships with each of us will be built over time, but relationships are really important to me. So I don't ever want you all to think that you can't reach out to us or that you have to phrase your questions some type of way. I am just a normal person like everyone else. I have a job and kids, and I don't want you all to feel like we're not approachable. So anything that you want or want to talk about, I don't want you to feel like there's a barrier and that we are accessible as well. Thank you.
Good. Definitely.
Counselor Burkle?
I too would just like to repeat what Counselor Favella said. Never, ever, ever feel uncomfortable coming forward to any of us with ideas, concerns, or for information. We're always open. We're there to support you. We want you to be very, very successful.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Yes.
I love the support. Thank you very much, Counsel. Okay, if there's another further comments, I would accept a motion.
Motion to approve the rules and procedures for the Youth Commission as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move to approve the rules and procedures of the Ridgefield Youth, Youth Commission as presented. Counsel, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much, Counsel. The motion carries. Okay. We are going to move into- We are going to move into, thank you very much, I'll just pause. Thank you very much. Thank you for all of you for your commitment. Thank you, parents, for your support for being here tonight. We are going to move into a public hearing about the budget. You are more than welcome to stick around. However, if you were wanting to maybe get home and not have to sit through a budget presentation, as riveting as it will be, Mr. Johnson.
Come on now.
I'm hyping you up, sir. You are welcome to leave right now. Yes, but thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
Little Henry, the little brother, he was a fabulous baseball player.
Cameron Hagan, he was a football president.
Did he? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, wow. Oh, that's great, yeah.
Exciting.
They're a big vacuum.
They're not.
Their dad was a crappy husband to my niece, but anyway, whatever. How life goes, yeah. Ah ha.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry to stir your thunder, but there's still, there's still a few diehards left, including seven people up here. The floor is yours, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and those that are still here. You did scare everybody out of here, and this would have been the best presentation they would have heard all year. So with that, let's go ahead and get started. Everybody likes to talk about budget, so. What we're here to do, we're at the, approaching the tail end portion of adopting our 2026 annual budget. Tonight, we'll be doing our first public hearing of three, and then we'll talk about a couple of specific topics for the budget as well. We are talking just about revenues tonight. This is a statutory requirement to have a revenue hearing to talk about what's going to come in to fund our government for the next year. So just a quick top line, we have an estimate of 80.4 million in revenue for this coming year, and that compares to about 70.6 million last year, so a 9.8 million difference. We're looking at 7.8 million of that is coming from internal transfers, so that's money we already have on hand, but it's being transferred mainly to cover capital projects. 190,000 of that is for lease payments, and then we have 3.4 million to pay debt service, 3.1 million to fund the capital projects, and 1.1 million to support our street operations and maintenance. We're also looking at about 15 million in tax revenue, 11.6 million from charges for services. That's our charges for like water service, stormwater service, and different other activities that we do, and there's a fee for that service. And then in state shared revenue of just over 651,000, it's about 4% of our budget, so that is one thing that we do always have some concerns about, especially as we've all heard about the budget difficulties at the state level right now. The good thing is it's not a significant amount of our budget, but we're always asking for more. And finally, about 4.25 million in new grant funding, and just about 36 million in proposed debt issuance that will be coming back to council for next year. And a balance will be in miscellaneous revenues. So with that, Julie, if we can jump to slide two. Again, this is just about revenues tonight, and then we'll hold a public hearing on that. We'll be talking about the operating funds, our capital service funds, which are our impact fees, system development charges, and our real estate excise tax, which the majority of that covers our debt service and then funds some of our capital projects. Our special revenue funds, those are funds that have specific requirements that are either set by outside agencies and/or statutes for the state of Washington. And then our capital project funds, which is where we actually do the projects for infrastructure and things like that. So again, let's go to slide three, and this is just a quick snapshot of what our revenue budget is in each of those areas for 2026 and the comparison to the amended budget for 2025. Again, it's about a 9.8 million difference. Looks like I had not updated the one in the slide. I mentioned it was 80.4 million. So there is one area, I believe that's with that public safety sales tax that council approved here a few weeks ago. So to slide four, general fund, this is the most flexible fund. It also covers the majority of the activities and services that we do in the city. This is where our taxes come in, which council has more flexibility of how to use that. They can use it for any governmental purpose. Our 2026 proposed budget is 15.6 million, and that's in comparison to 13.6 million, a 14.5% increase. A good portion of that, as you can see, 13.3% is in retail sales tax. That includes the increase with that public safety sales tax to help fund some officer positions coming up. The other one I'll point out is a significant increase in charges for goods and services of almost 28.7%. The majority of that is coming from indirect costs that are charged out to our proprietary funds, which are building and permitting water and storm. The general fund has a lot of support for those funds, whether it's HR services, finance services, our liability insurance, things like that. And we have a model that costs that out to every department, and that's the increase in what they would pay coming into the general fund to help pay for those services. Next slide five, this just kind of shows the breakdown of how our revenues come in to the general fund. The majority of it is 41.7% to retail sales tax. The other larger funding sources are property taxes and utility taxes. And again, that's a flexible source that council uses for the services that we provide. I have a couple more slides that I do want to show with some graphs. This tax revenues by source. This one shows the transition that we begun. We go back to 2015. Our transition really started with discussion about how to transition from one-time sales tax, which was really related to what we got with construction-related, you know, new subdivisions, things like that. That's a one-time source. When the construction was done, the money goes away. So we started to transition, council, you're well aware of this, to move to more of a commercial retail. And why I want to show this graph is this really shows a significant increase as we've been transitioning through to where we were about 3.8 million in 2015 to where we're over 15 million in 2026. So really, in 11 years, we've seen a pretty significant increase with that transition and moving to a more sustainable revenue source. So our next slide, seven, this is another one that I know council likes to point out. This is our property tax levy. We are going to, or we do have it built into the budget with the 1% statutory increase, which works out to about $25,000 spread out over the entire tax base. New construction, which is another source to increase our property tax, was about 174 million, which is about $107,000 increase in the levy amount. But what I really want to point out and why we show this over a longer period is the significant decrease in the levy amount in Ridgefield. It went from $1.14 per thousand in assessed value in 2015 to our projection for 2026 is about 58 cents. So it continues to go down each year. So as we go to slide eight, this will show the comparisons. This is a comparison, though, for 2025. I don't know what the projection is for other entities. I only know what it is for us. So we compare the current year based on what we've gotten from the Clark County Assessor's Office. As you can see in red, kind of close to the middle of the graph, is Ridgefield a 61 cents this year, and that's the lowest for cities in the county. So we have significantly been lower than most of the entities. The closest one to us is the portion of Woodland that's in Clark County, and then La Center. So and then on slide nine, same kind of situation, we're looking at 2025. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a quick question. What is the property tax levy for unincorporated county?
I believe I have that on this next slide here. Clark County is 75 cents per thousand.
Oh, okay. There it is. Perfect. Thank you.
So, and this next slide just kind of shows us compared to everywhere. This is what makes up the Ridgefield portion of the tax bill that everybody in Ridgefield gets. So this is kind of breaking it out where the majority would be state schools, $2.43, and then the Ridgefield School District at 266, and then everyone else kind of comes in below that. Again, the city is only 7% of the entire property tax bill that you would receive each So slide 10, this shows and has the estimate of adding that 1% increase per statute. This shows what is appreciation or what's the current base levy, and then what's the additional part that comes from the new construction. The new construction is the green in the graph, and as you can see, back in the 2020 through 2023 phase, that's when we were getting significant construction with housing, and so we had a pretty significant increase in new construction there. And then now it's a little bit less, but part of it is we have a much bigger tax base now as well, so that percentage is going to be a little bit less as we continue to So on slide 11, this shows what our CPI factor is, and this is just kind of trying to show you the inflationary factor that we see each year for the cost of services, the supplies that we're purchasing. This is what we use to increase our index, our index, our impact fees and our system development charges. And this factors into our labor agreements as one, if, there's typically a base amount in the labor agreements, and then there's the CPI. So if the CPI is above the base amount, then it would be the CPI. If it's below, then it would be that base amount that was negotiated in the contract. But what this shows is our 1% increase through the property tax levy doesn't match what our CPI, what our inflation is, so we're always falling behind there. So that's where we're working on always trying to increase other revenue sources as well. Services continue to get more expensive, so you need to make sure that we have the revenue to cover that. And the other thing that we do as we get farther into the public hearings is we really work on efficiencies as well, so that we're trying to do more efficient work, better processes, so that we can do more with less revenue as things get a little bit more expensive, but trying to really tighten it up there. And then finally, again, one of our other larger tax sources is utility tax. This is on utility taxes like water, sewer, electricity, things of that nature. Our general fund budget is 2.3 million. Our street fund budget is 175,000. Several years ago, council approved taking a portion of the water and sewer tax and putting 2% of that always to street operations to handle the maintenance there, and then the balance to the general fund. We do also transfer quite a bit of funding from general fund to balance out those street operations, so we are still taking, whether it's retail sales tax, property tax, or utility tax, to help fund our street operations as well. So that's general fund. Are there any questions from council on that?
Council, any questions at this point on revenues? Yeah, Councilor Birkel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Are we meeting our sales tax revenue flow into the city?
So it's increased pretty significantly. If I go back, let me go back to a slide here real quick so I can kind of, yeah. So last year, our retail sales tax was about 5.7 million was the budget. This year, it's 6.5. So that's an $800,000 increase. So for this year, in 2025 compared to 2024, I forecast a 20% increase with all the businesses that were opening, specifically Costco, the big one that is pretty significant revenue, and then a lot of the building at Union Ridge Town Center and in other areas. We're getting about a 16% increase right now. Part of that is because some of the businesses have slowed down a little bit with the economy, uncertainty at the federal and the state level. There has been a little bit of a slowdown there, and we're seeing a slowdown in spending as well. We do still see a pretty significant amount coming through online sales and deliveries into Ridgefield, so that's helpful, but we have definitely seen some slowdown because of the economy right now.
Thank you. Other questions at this point, council? Okay.
Okay. So on to our street fund and building and permitting fund, and these are two more of our operating funds. Street fund, 1.6 million proposed budget compared to about a 1.5 to 1.6 million in the amended budget last year. So it's about a 2% increase. The majority of this does come from transfers from the general fund, which is going to be about a 9% increase. We did have a grant last year that we will finish the work this year, so we won't be receiving a grant into that fund. And then our intergovernmental, which is our motor vehicle fuel tax and multimodal tax and things like that, I'm actually forecasting a little bit of a drop there, 1.3%. The amount that they give us per capita, even though our population has increased, it's gone down quite a bit. And then, as everyone's aware, there's a lot more hybrid and a lot more electric vehicles out there, so there's less gas sales. So I do anticipate that we're going to see less revenue coming from that source. So building and permitting, this one is pretty much 100% user fee-based for the revenues. This is our permitting processes. Council approved a update to our fee schedule here last year, or actually earlier this year. It's kind of been a long year, so. But they approved that, so there is some significant projections right now for increases there, mainly related to the cost recovery portion of that. I do anticipate a little bit more permitting. We've seen an awful lot of land use permits coming in, and then we are forecasting the same amount of residential permits, but also 194 multifamily units that should come online or at least have permits going for next year. So with that, overall in the fund, it's about a 41.5% increase in revenue. All of that, again, coming from the permits and then the professional services that we offer to work through those permits. So any questions on those?
I'd just have a comment.
Okay.
The comment I have is both those, the permits and planning and development, we have a 45 and a 38% increase. And I guess the comment I'm going to make is just to the council, we picked a conservative rate on increase, and yet we are still seeing this, which is good. I'm not, I'm not knocking it, but I guess it's a kudo that we did hold it back, and yet the city is still surviving. That's my comment.
So on to our utility funds, our water and our stormwater utilities. Charges for services in both of them, I am actually forecasting a drop in what the budgeted revenue is, 3.7 million versus 3.8 in water, and 2 versus about 2.3 in storm. The reason for that, there's two reasons. For water, one of them is conservation. So we really saw a significant change with the conservation plan that council approved through this summer, so we are forecasting that to continue. The other piece is the rate model that council approved in 2023. I did discover a, an error in the forecasting for future years, and so... an error in the forecasting for future years, and so by catching that, we got that corrected this year, so we're not overestimating our revenues. So we did correct that, but that was one of the reasons that we're seeing, specifically in the stormwater, a pretty significant decrease in what you would expect with the growth. Overall, water is down about point six percent and stormwater about point five, or five percent, excuse me. So, on to slide fifteen. I always like to show a comparison to other agencies for our utilities as well. With council's direction, we've really worked hard to try to keep our utility rates as low as possible and get down to one of the lowest in the county. The one we can't compete with, obviously, is Clark Public Utilities. They have a larger scope and service area, so they have more to draw on. But what I want to point to is this graph. If you look at the two in red on the far left, in 2025, Ridgefield for our water rate, the average for eight hundred cubic feet per month, which is the average for a normal household, was thirty-one eleven. With the three percent increase per the model, which is an inflationary increase, it would go to thirty-two point oh seven. We're still lower than anyone but Clark County unincorporated, which is covered by Clark Public Utilities, and La Center, which is also covered by Clark Public Utilities. If you look at every other city that has their own water service, they're significantly higher than what Ridgefield is. So, on to the next slide. This is the stormwater. And similar situation, in 2024, we also were subject to new regulations from the Department of Ecology. So what that helps, well, doesn't really help with, is it significantly increases our cost. But it is good for the environment, and that's one thing that we obviously pride ourselves here in Ridgefield. So when you compare our rates, 2025, the rate was thirteen dollars and eighty cents. In 2026, per the rate model, be fifteen dollars and eighteen cents per month. We do bill in a two-month period, so it would be double that, you know, in the billing, but we're breaking it out and comparing it to a monthly fee. That's a ten percent increase per the rate model. This is something that was presented to council back in 2023 and approved there. It was a higher rate for three years. The next two still will be higher increases of nine percent each year, and then it would go, per the rate model at this point, unless something else occurs, it would go down to an inflationary increase. One thing I do want to point out, the only city that had their future rates already on their website was Camas. They've approved their rates up through 2028. For stormwater, they have a thirteen point five percent increase every single year. And back to water, it's a six percent increase every year. So our rate model is still projecting a little bit higher rates, but still significantly lower than other cities. The only two areas that are lower than the city overall is La Center. They aren't subject to the same requirements that we are, and then Clark County unincorporated, which has a bigger scale and doesn't have the same requirements out in some of the more rural areas. Now, the next slide, seventeen is sewer rates. We don't control the sewer rates, but we like to show this because council made the decision to transfer over our collection system to Clark Regional Wastewater District, and then also partner with them, Battleground and the county on Discovery Clean Water Alliance. The rates will go up slightly next year, but if you look from when we first transferred that over in 2014, it was sixty dollars and fifty cents. It's currently sixty-one dollars and sixty cents as a projection in 2026. That's not a big change, and that was good thinking to get a scale and get a partner that was able to work with us and keep our rates lower. So, Counsel Wells?
I just got a comment. Part of our negotiations, when we went with Clark Regional for every three hundred EDUs, we turned around and got a dollar off of our sewer bill. So if we built six hundred houses, we got two dollars off of our sewer bill, but they increased their sewer fees to everybody else, but ours was reduced by two dollars. So ours has stayed even all the way through because of having that in negotiations.
Good job. Wow.
So, on to slide eighteen. This is the total utility rates for water, storm, and sewer. Ridgefield compared to the other areas as well, and as you can see in the red again, other than Clark County unincorporated and La Center, we're lower than everybody else, and you can look at Vancouver is over a hundred and fifty-five dollars on average for the bill each month, whereas the city of Ridgefield, actually, this is a bimonthly, I believe. Yeah, this is a bimonthly, and we're almost fifty dollars cheaper. So that's pretty significant, and it's still funding our services that we're providing. Any questions on the rates? So, slide nineteen, the capitals and special revenue funds. The capital funds, which is real estate excise tax, the impact fees, and the SDCs, we are projecting about a twenty-five point seven percent increase overall. We aren't going to get as much revenue as we have in the past because we have a lot of credits out there for impact fees. Council is well aware of that. We've provided credits so that we can get work done by the developers. Next year, I'm projecting, this year, let me step back a little bit. This year, I projected twenty percent of impact fees would be paid with cash and eighty percent with credits, which were right at that number, if not slightly lower. Next year, I'm projecting that thirty percent will be paid in cash and seventy percent paid in credits. We do have a lot of credits out there, but we do see some developers that are choosing, just for expediency purposes, just to pay and move on so that they can get going with their permits. Overall, in those funds, a five point six million in revenue compared to four point five last year. Special revenue funds, the two I'm really going to point out are the tax increment area. That's the area around the junction that was set up to fund the project, like the Pioneer Widening Project. This year was the first year that we started receiving revenue for that. We projected thirty thousand. We were notified earlier this year that there was an error at the assessor's office in how they calculated the levy and how we should receive that funding that's distributed from other agencies. So we're going to get close to about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand this year instead. So our proposed budget for next year is about two hundred and fifty thousand. So we are seeing a lot more increase in construction out there, so hopefully it will even outweigh that. That's a hard one to forecast right now because we don't have any baselines of really how to look at that. And I know the other agencies are having a hard time with that one as well. The other one is the Transportation Benefit District. This is the sales tax that comes in that helps the city with pavement preservation and transportation projects. About one point two million this year compared to about one point seven last year, a five percent increase, and that helps fund quite a few transportation projects for us. So finally, our debt service and our capital project funds. Debt service, about three point four million. That's exactly what we will pay in debt service for the different issuance that we've had. That's about a sixteen point eight percent increase. That's mainly related to potential issuance, for one, for the rec center, and then also the Pioneer Widening as well. The capital projects, a total of about forty-two point seven million in revenue, and then thirty-eight million is the comparison from 2025, about a twelve point three percent increase there. The one that I'll really point out there that's pretty significantly different is the Equipment Replacement Fund. Part of the budget, when we had to do some reductions, was to reduce the amount of input from the operating funds to the Equipment Replacement Fund. So only the water fund will be contributing this year, and then we'll go back to having the model contribute, starting again in 2027. So, overall, that's about a thirteen point nine percent increase in our revenue budget. For our capital projects, new grant funding, and this is brand-new funding, is three point seven million. Partner share, four hundred and forty-two thousand. This is developers paying for one specific project, and then debt issuance of about thirty-six million and internal transfers of over three million. That's just for the capital portion of that part. So that is everything I have, other than we'll have three ordinances to just do a quick synopsis, and then we have two more public hearings coming up at the next meeting and then the first meeting in December. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, council, we will go to public hearing, but before we do that, we want to make sure we have all of your questions answered first, and so I'll look around to make sure that there are... Okay, Counsel Wells, we'll start with you.
I just got another comment. Institutional knowledge. Back in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, the city of Ridgefield, according to Mayor Onslow, was in the red in the budget. And what we've heard tonight, the city's budget is, I lost it. Oh, seventy point six million in that, over that time. Do you have any other corrections to that?
You are correct. The general fund was negative at that time, and they had to actually loan money from the Real Estate Excise Tax Fund to make payroll at one time. And after the Great Recession was over, it was a pretty slow crawl to build things back up. And then, as we started that transition phase, we really focused on getting sustainable revenue sources in here, and we've done a really good job of building things up as the city grows.
Thank you for filling in, Kurt.
Counsel, any other questions at this point? Seeing none. Okay, we will close out council questions right now, and we will go to public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the presentation. It's always very helpful. I feel like we've seen it, this stuff a number of times, but it's always very, very helpful to have that, because there's a lot of pieces in that. So, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. If you sign up with the city clerk before the meeting, your name will be called, and you will receive permission to unmute your microphone or step up to the podium. If you did not sign up in advance but would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on your toolbar. If you're joined in by phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and press star six to mute or unmute, and the city clerk will grant you permission to speak. And when speaking, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes, and there will be no back and forth between this, the no-back-and-forth discussion between the city council and the speaker. This is related to specifically the budget presentation that we just saw specifically. So I will now open the public hearing, and Ms. Julie, is there anybody signed up to speak tonight?
I do not have anyone sign up.
Okay. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak during this public hearing? Is there anybody online, Ms. Julie?
Not seeing anyone online near.
Okay. I'll look around to the room one more time. Anybody wanting to speak? Seeing none. I will close the public hearing. It's now closed, and we will go to council discussion. This is a first reading only, so there's no action tonight, but we will go back to any council discussion if there is any. If not, we will move on to our agenda. Okay, seeing no comments. We're going to move on with our business items of the evening. Thank you again, Mr. Johnson. We do appreciate it. Look, you're still, don't go far because you got a full lineup here.
I thought you were going to release me like you did everyone else.
We'd be up a creek if we did that. We started looking like two thousand and eight Ridgefield, so we don't want to do that. Okay, we're going to go to our first, our next item of business tonight is the first reading of ordinance number fourteen sixty-five. This is the 2026 property tax levy and revenues. Mr. Johnson, back to you.
Thank you again. So just real quick on this one, because we did cover this in detail. We do have baked into the budget the one percent statutory increase. The one thing to bring up is, as a city that's over ten thousand in population, we're only allowed to take the full one percent if the implicit price deflator, which is an inflationary calculation, if it exceeds one percent, otherwise we have to do a separate ordinance. It is at two point four four percent at the time that they calculated at the state level, so council only needs to do this one ordinance to pass that increase. With that, the increase brings an additional twenty-five thousand, and then, like I said, a little bit over a hundred and six thousand, I believe it was, for new construction. That would be the property tax levy. Total levy that we're looking at for our estimate for this coming year is two million, six hundred and fifty thousand. With that, any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, counsel, any questions on the property tax levy rates and the revenues received from those? Okay, no questions. Sounds like we're good. If there's no questions, Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number fourteen sixty-five, ordinance of the city of Ridgefield, estimating the, establishing the estimated add valorem taxes necessary to finance anticipated requirements of the city of Ridgefield, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six by increasing property tax revenue from the previous year.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, and this is first reading only. It'll be coming back to us for ratification here at a later date before the end of the year. Moving on to our next item of business, this is the first reading of, this is the first reading of ordinance number fourteen sixty-six. This is the 2026 Water Utility Rate Code Amendments. Mr. Johnson, over to you.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So again, we did talk a little bit about this. As council members, in 2023, we did a new rate study, updated our rate model, and each year we do go through that. With that, the water is forecast to just do an inflationary increase of a flat three percent. For a normal household using an average of sixteen hundred cubic feet of water over a two-month billing period, the increase with that three percent increase would be two dollars and twenty-four cents for their bills. So that's the average there. We do expect this to help our revenues to increase five point five percent, including the increase in households and businesses that will be coming into the city as well. The total budget, rate revenues in 2026, about three point six million. Miscellaneous revenue, about three hundred and thirty-two thousand. That's mainly investment earnings and things like that. Total revenue, about three point nine million, which is a two hundred and twenty-one thousand increase. And of that, five percent of the rate revenues goes into a repair and replacement reserve that we use, and we just approved a project today that will be using some of those reserves to redo one of our wells during the winter time when it's down, so that as we get to timeframe that we need, we have that to use, and in our budget, we do have some things next year that will be used in that reserve as well. With that, unless there's any questions, that's the presentation on this one, and it is, again, first reading on this one as well.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I will look to council again. Any questions or comments at this point? Okay, that's easy. Seeing none. Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number fourteen sixty-six, ordinance of the city of Ridgefield, Washington, amendment, Ridgefield Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point three five, and ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, adjusting bimonthly water rates.
Great. Thank you again. First reading only, so this will be coming back in a couple of weeks. Okay, our next item of business is first reading of ordinance number fourteen sixty-seven. This is the 2026 Stormwater Utility Rate Code Amendments. Mr. Johnson, one more time.
Thank you again. For stormwater, again, we went over this a little bit earlier. Same situation as water. We did a rate study in 2023. It was estimated at that time to have higher increases in the stormwater because we were subject to those new requirements under the MPTS permit beginning in 2024, which has a stair-step requirement of things that we have to do for ecology. The increase over a two-month billing period would be two dollars and seventy-six cents per EDU. So that would go to a total of thirty dollars and thirty-six cents every two months. It is a ten percent increase in the next two years, per the rate model, or a nine percent increase. It is a 10% increase in the next two years, per the rate model, or a 9% increase, as we presented to council back when we did the study. With that, the rate revenue is just over 2 million. Total revenue with investment and miscellaneous revenue, about 2.16 million. It is a $390,000 increase over 2025 for the budget. So that's everything I have for this one, since we talked about it in the public hearing. If you have questions, happy to answer.
Counsel, okay, Counsel Favela, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And just, I think you said this, in 2028, this will level back to that 3%, correct?
That's the forecast now per the rate model, yes. We do update that model every year, so if something significant happened, then we would come to council before we change what rate model that you approved at that time.
Great.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, counsel? Okay, the only other thing I'll, I'll add to this, too, is, you know, I know the counsel, we, we came up with this stepped increase over the last few, a couple of years ago. And I think it is important, you know, I just was recently at a public hearing for Clark Public Utilities, who has not raised their water rates in, I think, a few years, I think almost a decade, and what ended up happening there is, they kind of felt like they needed to do that, and what you end up seeing after a number of years is you get a 20, 25%, I think is where it ended up, 25% increase, which is kind of a shock if you live in a county and you depend on them for your primary water source. And so, while I don't ever love fee and tax increases, I do, I do have to appreciate that we're going about it smartly, and you do have to cut, you have to pay the bills, you have to cover the cost of doing business. And so, I'd rather do it in a stepped way than having a big jump every few years and shocking the heck out of our residents. So, thank you, staff, for your foresight there. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1467, ordinance of the city of Ridgefield, Washington, amending Ridgefield municipal code, chapter 13.75, and ordinance number 1437, to amend fees and charges for the stormwater utility by increasing by monthly stormwater rate.
Great, thank you again, and this is first reading only. We'll be coming back for action later in the month. All right, our next item of business is the second reading of ordinance number 146D. This is the 2025 commercial development code amendments, and we will go to Ms. Luss.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to council and members of the public. This is the second reading of our batch of proposed amendments to the commercial development code. These went to public hearings at both planning commission and city council back in September, so now they are back before council for action. Just to reiterate the background on this project, the topics for consideration came from a variety of sources, including members of the public, staff in our work with the code, business owners, commercial developers, as well as our elected and appointed officials. These were vetted both through planning commission and council, through the hearings we've held thus far, as well as with our contacts in the local development community whose projects might be affected by these changes. The goals, there are a few main goals. They include offering additional support for small business owners, making commercial sites more user-friendly, as well as adding flexibility to design standards while maintaining quality that has and will continue to define projects here in Ridgefield. And as a final note, before we jump in, any code adopted through an action this evening will apply to future projects and applications, unless there may be cases where applicants choose to waive prior vesting in favor of, of new code, which is a request that they may make. But generally speaking, this applies to future projects only. All right, the table of topics is on the screen before you, also starts on page 74 of your packet. These are all topics that we've been through before, so I'm not going to go line by line this time. I will note that since the public hearing on September 25th, only one change was made, and that was a change to the item around commercial building color requirements, based on the feedback we received from both planning commission and council, to sort of change the focus of that away from prohibiting certain colors and more towards requiring harmony between buildings and a development, as well as leaning more on existing language in the code, requiring earth tones, and for secondary buildings to complement primary buildings in larger developments. So with that, Mayor, I will turn it back to you and ask that if council has any further questions on any of the items in this table, I'd be happy to respond. Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you, Ms. Luss, and I will look to counsel for questions or comments at this point. Before I do, I'm going to cut in line, just because I'm curious, like, when you say prior vesting and that, does that mean that, what qualifies for prior vesting, like, it wouldn't apply to them? Is it, they already have an application filed and, or what, what is it that does that?
Sure, I can clarify that. So projects vest when their land use application is found to be technically complete.
Okay.
Which is a formal step in our planning review process.
Gotcha. Okay, great, thanks. Counsel, looking to you for questions or comments for staff at this point? Anything? Okay. Oh, go ahead. Oh, who is?
I, I still have questions about this 230.055 that you just said that you made some changes to. So can we talk about that a little bit? It went off my screen. Okay, so change to include buildings shall incorporate multiple field or base colors to avoid a monochromatic appearance, and buildings within a commercial base shall have harmonious field or base colors. I don't...
I, I have a question on that, too, because if you look at the existing code, I was looking at it last night in the packet, if I could, Mayor, put it down.
Yeah, please go ahead, yeah.
Okay. There is, so...
We were talking about this today.
The part that is not redlined, which means that it's already, is already exists, is it says, "The base colors shall be earth-tone colors such as sands, grays, sage greens, pale yellows, deep, rich clay colors and similar." This, this started about, you know, was about white buildings, and I think that's where it began there, but the existing code does not list white as a earth-tone color. So it was, is that something that was already in code or permissible? Or was that, I, I'm a little confused there, because it didn't show like that, it wasn't named previously, so I'm kind of wondering how we got there.
It's not, it has not been in code. This kind of circles back to our original conversation of what is white versus off-white. So, yeah, that's...
And, and Mayor, to be clear, the list that you read, it says such as.
Yes.
So it's not an inclusive list.
Right.
So even though white is not mentioned in the list, it is not precluded in this list. Is it, it's, the, the colors you read off, it just says such as, sands, grays, sage greens, pale yellows. So that's part of why that was...
Gotcha, okay.
So we had a conversation about this today, and, I mean, things change, colors change, styles change, and I don't want to have something in code that, two years from now, you know, all the, all the new buildings are coming out, you know, looking white. I mean, that white is what's in, and all of a sudden, we can't use white in Ridgefield. I mean, I can't tell you how many houses have been painted white lately in Taverna Ridge, and I love them. I just don't want to prohibit something that might be what's going to be new in two years, and we still have this code that says you have to have earth tones.
Again, white is not prohibited. Within this code language, white is not prohibited. It is only that white may not be used as the sole color, that you must use complementary, you must use, what's the word?
Harmonious.
Harmonious colors to complement the base color. So nothing in this code prohibits white, off-white, eggshell white, any kind of white. All it says, you have to have more than one color. Within these earth tones, that is a broad brush.
Great, okay. Counsel Verkell, I think you have a comment.
And just to clarify something for my own information, this is for commercial buildings only, not single-family residents?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Um, go ahead. Other questions, go ahead.
This, just to clarify, is making sure that we can use this language so that we don't have a large commercial building come in, and it's just one solid color. It breaks it up. There could be other textures, other colors, so it is more visually appealing than just one solid giant color.
Right, right. No, I get that, I just didn't, I shouldn't want us to say that it had to be a sand tone or a brown tone, you know what I mean? So...
Counsel Davis.
And, boy, I'm hesitant to even open this, but, I know, I'm going to do it anyway. In this context, how do we define harmonious?
For real.
Uh, yeah, because, like, I, I guess that's important to understand, is how, how we're going to define harmonious. Like, these two colors, are they harmonious, are they not?
I guess my initial answer to that would be, we've relied on language about, you know, complimentary and similar adjectives in the code in the past, and we've, you know, relied on the professional judgment of our, our staff, who has been hired to have the, the skills to review projects and, and make that call.
And just as with any other code language, you look to the plain language first. So the way that it would be interpreted and the way that it would be by law, it would need to be interpreted as you look at plain language first. The definition of harmonious is tuneful, not discordant, forming a pleasing or consistent whole, free from disagreement. So those are, those are dictionary definitions. That's where you start. So when you're doing an interpretation of code, you start with the plain language definition.
Yeah, but it, it is going to go back to more or less common sense on behalf of staff. You know, somebody that puts in an app, and they're like, well, I want to have my building be pink and purple, and I would argue that that's harmonious. We're probably still going to say that probably doesn't fit, right, even if it's a pale pink.
They're not earth tones.
Not earth tones, yeah, there you go. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
From my vantage point, you know, like, this entire package of code updates that we are doing has always been intended to be small-business friendly, removing some of the regulations here. And I feel a little silly having a, maybe a more extensive debate, as, you know, as we're talking about monochromatic colors or, or paint colors and what businesses can or can't do, but I do think it does set a precedent of, you know, maybe slightly some overreach there, because all these other amendments, if you look at them, they're about easing restrictions, not necessarily increasing restrictions. This is the only one, I think, that really increases restrictions on that. So, in the spirit of, of this, counsel, I, I would love to, I mean, I, I'm not, this is the only one that I think I'm not, not in favor of, and so I'd love to be able to kind of debate this separately. I'd maybe look into counsel to entertain a motion to remove this and, and do it separately, so that we can pass the rest of these, and we can decide, is this something we really want to pursue? Counsel Hamilton, I'll look to you for questions.
Thank you, yeah, the question before, I, I would not be as, in, like, in favor of a motion right now. I think that we are overthinking this. To a certain extent, I think that we are responsible for aesthetically pleasing spaces. I think you have to have language and, and parameters around that. That's the same thing we were looking at last week with residential, with where the doors are placed and things like that. We have to have some sort of strategy and parameter, because you need clarity for these things. I think earth tones, do we have, just for some clarification, do we have swatches or things that people choose from within the earth, earth tone family that they can point to, that is just sort of like a booklet that we're looking at, or?
We do not have a booklet. However, we do have a suite of projects that have been approved under the earth tone language that we, as staff, are happy to offer as examples of what has been used to meet that code.
Perfect, and I, as a, as someone who owns a business, I don't own a building, but I think it's, it doesn't feel as restrictive to someone who understands you're part of a cohesive front to everything else. If everyone else is opposed to this language, I will certainly entertain that, but I think that harmonious, I think that we're nitpicking words when the general tone is, we just don't want all white buildings, right?
Or solid.
Solid colors, monochromatic. Monochromatic is really the feature here that we're trying to go against, and I'm pro non-monochromatic.
Okay, good.
To clarify, in, in buildings, specifically, you can have a monochromatic outfit on your work.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that we...
Counsel, real quick, Mayor, put it in as a four.
I'm going to make a motion that we pull this section, and we consider it separately from the rest of the code amendments.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pull this section, I think it's section 18.230.055.I. One, from this batch of code amendments and to debate separately, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's been seconded? Okay. Any discussion on that motion in particular, counsel?
It's about to get dicey in here.
It is, it's going to be fun. Okay, seeing none, there is a motion, a second on here, so I will say, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
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 I was a probably better count, yeah.
Two nays.
Three.
Three nays, four ayes.
Okay, it looks like the ayes have it. We will debate that separately. Okay. Point of order, city manager, so from here, we can just go through the, the batch of code amendments, and we will come back to this one separately, is that how that works?
You absolutely can. You can do them in either order at this point, since you've removed it for separate deliberation and action, you can address either of those.
Okay. Since we're kind of on the hot button issue, why don't we just stick with this one? And so, I, you know, I, I guess I would say, I, I feel like this is probably unnecessary. I understand, I'm, I'm probably pro-non, how do you say it, pro-non-monochromatic?
Yeah.
Sheesh. But here's what I will say, like, you made a comment a couple of weeks ago, Counselor Hamilton, I really liked kind of the sentiment there, where you wanted to allow some flexibility when we were talking about side interests and things like that, and you said, we should leave that to a, maybe a DA, so you can kind of find the nuance there. This feels like it would be appropriate to include in that as well. Like, so if we're pro-non-monochromatic, then maybe we would just say we can work that out through a DA, and that way would kind of provide some, because I don't want to imagine every, every sense of flexibility we have there, you know, and, and I'd rather make that a conversation with community development and the business owner, if possible. That's, that's kind of what I thought, but I'll look to counsel for any other comments or questions on that, too. Go ahead.
All right, yeah, and I, you know, I want to avoid overthinking as well. And I guess where my mind always goes back to is, what opportunities we're giving businesses to create an identity for themselves and be able to have a little bit of agency in that, but also, you know, protecting, like, the bigger picture, you might say. And also, I, I keep, I think about your business, Counsel Hamilton, because I am a proud customer of your business, and when you go in, there's a lot of, a lot of white and a lot of pink, right?
It's all pink and gold.
Pink and gold, okay. And so, you know, I think about that as an example, where, you know, if you open up a little shop in Ridgefield, maybe a lot of pink, like, would we allow that? And how would that fit in and things of that nature? And just to, like, have as a, as an example in my mind. And so, I guess, I'm just saying that to guide, I guess, what my thought process is, is how do we let people build that brand, but also have it be cohesive? And that's, that's really the end product that I'd be after, and so it's not just to say, how do you define harmony? But it's like, you know, are we defining it too much that we can't let businesses have a unique identity?
Counsel Hamilton.
Thank you, and I appreciate your patronage, number one. Number two, I'm not the outside of the building. I'm an interior suite, and so I think we're thinking almost in two different sections here about, we want to preserve charm and quaintness, and that's a lot of downtown. A lot of the businesses and the buildings, I think that this code is referencing, are the bigger businesses that are happening, that need to have a different aesthetic than perhaps the downtown area and a more industrial area or a more commercial area, let's say. So I think that it's okay to have those standards in those larger sweeping areas that make very big statements, and then you can still have, it, it sounds like with the language, it's not as prohibitive as we're assuming it is here, based on what Mr. Stewart said. So I think that, while I appreciate the uniqueness, I think that happens in the business, and it's okay to have cohesion on the outside and have some regularities to make sure everything looks good on the outside for the masses.
Great, thank you, Counsel. Counsel Hamilton, Favela, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's a compliment.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm not kidding, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I also think we're a little bit overthinking it. I come back to, really, the idea is, is that we just don't want a building to be one solid color. And we do this with our housing, too. When we've toured, to make sure like backsides of houses, we wanna make sure there's trim around the window so that it's broken up and you don't see houses that are built with solid color and solid color trim. It's broken up to be more aesthetically pleasing. I don't think this is prohibitive to the outside of the building. And to Counselor Davis's point, I think businesses can still have their creativity when you go inside and they have the uniqueness of the building, but that creativity doesn't have to be shown on the outside. You can have similarity and cohesion amongst the outside. And then on the inside, babe, go hot pink and gold. I'm, I personally am in favor of that color palette, but just not outside.
Mayor Protam?
I guess my point is, I don't want to, I don't wanna be stuck in a style, in a color style in this city that five years from now, everybody else is moving away from, you know, into something different. And all of a sudden, we have code that says we have to do a different thing. That, that sticks us, I mean, you know, because things change. Styles change, colors change, and we want to, you know, we wanna move along with it. I mean, we're, I mean, that's, that's my feeling on it. And maybe this still allows us to do that. But as I read it, it didn't feel to me like it did, but maybe it does.
I, I guess what I'd add that to also is like, I think we've done a pretty good job in this town of, of outlining, outlining some, some design standards that we have for commercial developments and what they should look like and how to preserve sort of a cohesive look to our city. But also, I think it is a relatively slippery slope to set a precedent where we are increasingly setting standards for subjective asset of control as opposed to giving a business owner power or, or flexibility. And I think that's where I, I come back to thinking, you know, we're, we're sort of minimizing the same. We're overthinking it. Maybe this isn't that big of a deal. But it, but I think where it, where it becomes a big deal is this is something that eventually there's gonna be other things, too, and we're setting a precedent for that. And I'd rather focus on things that are clear and objective and tie to real community outcomes. There, you know, that would empower businesses to express their identity within a community standard, but not so tight that we are kind of saying, monochromatic or not, or trying to imagine every single, every single situation where we'd have that. And, you know, that's where I do think that we need to probably think about it. And the subjectivity, too, of the word harmonious, I, I know that we, there's quite a bit of nuance in there, too, in how we've done it, but it does feel inherently subjective. And it feels like this is really mostly based off of a personal precedent, personal preference, rather than a predictable design guidance that we can offer our business owners. And so, you know, with that, that's where I ultimately go back to thinking, this feels unnecessary. It feels like this is something that we don't need to codify in order to have a positive outcome. We could probably work through it through a, a process with that business owner as they're planning their, the design of their business. Counselor Hamilton?
I, I definitely appreciate everything you're saying. I really, I genuinely do. I think two points I would make to that would be, I think we're being very earnest in thinking most business owners are also the building owners. And that's very often not the case. We're talking to developers or bigger picture. So sometimes it is the business owner, very often it's not. There are people renting from the building owner. And so I think that is something to keep in mind, too. I don't think we're restricting rights from business owners as much as we think we are. And then I don't actually remember what my other point was, but thank you.
Counselor Favella?
Oh, am I on? I look at Starbucks. Their whole side of their building is like a mural. It, all these different, it's harmonious. But nobody said you can't put a bunch of flowers on the side of your building. It's all the same color palette and it's covered with a huge giant mural. And we're like, yeah, go for it. It's beautiful and it's harmonious and it's within the color scheme and you're good to go. So I don't think that we're taking anything away by saying, just don't do one solid brown, one solid white, one solid orange, lime green, whatever it is. Do something to break it up.
Okay. I come here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, yeah. And, sorry. Just to clarify, does this code cover every, like, district of the city, like, commercial district?
It is for the commercial districts. Those are the zones you see around Pioneer and Royal as well as the junction.
Okay. So I guess as our conversation has unfolded, like, I've, I believe that there's, like, kind of a different vibe to downtown compared to some of those districts that we're talking about. And so if you're talking about, I wouldn't wanna preclude a downtown business owner, you know, say it's a, you know, new building or whatever, from being able to have a little more eclectic color palettes. I mean, we have a lot of that downtown and it brings a lot of character to downtown. Do I think that necessarily some of what we have downtown already, if you were to copy paste that and put it at the junction, would it make a lot of sense? Hmm, maybe not. And I don't necessarily wanna be overly prescriptive, but I guess my, the geographic element is, I guess, it, it weighs in on me because I think downtown is a little different than other parts.
Absolutely. Counselor Hamilton?
I remembered my other point. Thank you. I'm sorry. My other point was that code changes also, right? We can make amendments if something, I know that we don't wanna think that way in the future, but it's not like we're signing this in a blood oath right now that we can never change. That's the whole reason that we're looking at this right now is because it's an amendment. So I think that, I think that we can think about that possibility as well, too. It's, it's, works for now, and if it doesn't in five years, we're, we have to be amenable in a city no matter what.
Yeah, I guess that's where I go back to Mayor Protam's point, is when you say, hey, if we can change it back, you know, like, well, then, I ask why put it in code to begin with, if I think this is something can be changed based on trends or preferences or whatever, you know, we're doing every, every few years. Ideally, I think that you wanna set good policy and write good code that doesn't have to be amended based off of trends and whims and preferences. And maybe if we're looking at that as a possibility, again, that's where I go back to. I don't know if this is, if this is necessarily necessary to include. But I'll, 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 I'll be done debating on, on that point alone. I'll look to the counselors and we can move on in our, on our agenda. Counselor Wells?
My com, my comment is, I'm not an interior designer or an exterior color designer, and I don't care. I'm ready for black and white. You, the rest of you guys can make the decision, and I'll just have.
Okay. Other questions or comments at this point, counsel? If not, this is a separate, now this is now treated as a separate item, so we'd have to take that. We can take action on it. There'd be a motion. You can defer action. We just go back to the rest of the package of amendments, so. But it's up to you all, to you guys, to decide what you do next. Okay, if we're not gonna take action on it, then we would just go back to the other item of business?
If you do not take action on this item, it goes away because there has been no action taken. So you either make a motion to take action, yes or no, or you don't take action and poof, it's gone.
Precisely.
You mean that one item is gone?
Yeah, just the one item. Okay. Going once, going twice?
I apologize. I'm being newer. I don't know exactly.
That's all right, yeah.
Here, if we're not in agreement, but we need, I think there should be something. And I don't think this should poof, go away. So I'm, I'm asking the, the council, what should we do in this instance, then?
Mr. Mayor, to your point, if we put this in a DA agreement versus having it in a code, is there some way staff can point out to us or make it apparent when these applications come in to say, hey, by the way, this building, they wanted all dark brown and all dark brown trim? And we're like, hmm, maybe we don't want that. Let's amend that when it comes in. That just feels messy and like unnecessary.
I can tell you, we've never actually addressed color scheme in any of our development agreements. At all. Because development agreements are development by development. And by its very nature, the commercial and residential design standards that you have identify color palettes throughout larger areas so that there's continuity. And you don't want me, because I negotiate a lot of these DAs, figuring out what the color palette is for each one of those and then bringing it to you and saying, well, they wanna do pink and green on this one, or they wanna do blue and red. I, I, it is not something we have done in DAs. I'm not saying it can't be done. It's not something I've seen.
Well, I think it's, I think it's too dangerous not to have something that controls the color.
So what about just removing this section that just says, building shall incorporate, it's A. I guess it'd be item A. Building shall incorporate multiple fields of, or base colors to avoid monochromatic appearance. So that seems to be the sticking point amongst counsel, if I'm hearing that. So if you were to say, we'd adopt this, but strike item A, and then you keep B, so they still get to be harmonious, whatever that means? And then we, you know, then you have something that, that gives you some legs. Would that suffice, counsel?
To be clear, that would be an amendment to the item that you have before you that you haven't quite moved on from. So that would be an amendment to the item before you.
Right, but I mean, so they, if somebody can make a, make a motion to adopt this item and just like exclude item A from it, right? That's not an amendment. That's just the part of the motion, right?
You could.
Yeah.
That is certainly, that is an option. It is also, and to Counselor Hamilton's point, the options before you right now are exactly what you just stated, sir.
Yeah.
Where you can either take a motion or an amended motion on this item. If you, if counsel feels like that you have a place where you're ready to land on that. And again, it doesn't have to be, to your point, counselor, if you're not in agreement, that's why you vote on things. So I mean, sometimes it's not seven oh. That's okay.
Yeah.
But as far as the, but if you're not there, then either, like I said, poof, it goes away or counsel directs staff to bring something back at a later date that, that addresses the concerns you've raised. Those are your options.
That might be a better idea.
Mm-hmm.
Ask them to bring something back.
Yeah, I think so. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
How about if we just ask them to bring something back for that part?
That has to be done via motion, right?
No. I'm looking at the picture of Janine Parker. We have a bunch of other batches. We have like two more batches of code updates that are coming to you. This has already gone to Planning Commission, so it would need to go back. So we would need to have to go backwards on it. We have another batch that just went to Planning Commission and is coming forward to counsel that we could wrap this into, I think. But I'm looking to Ms. Parker for assistance, if that's okay with you, Mayor.
Yes, that'd be fine. Yeah, please.
So these are commercial amendments. I'm gonna ask Claire, is the second batch sufficiently broad in amendments that we could, that this would be, this could be incorporated in them? Or would it be a separate subject?
It is. I'm mostly using the title, Commercial Amendments, as an organizational tool. All these amendments and those in the next batch are generally in Title 18 of the municipal code.
Okay. So with, with that understanding, I think you could bring it back still within this period of time, within this year's amendments. And you would want to, because this has been, this, I mean, you don't have to have a motion. You can just have a general consensus, as we talked about earlier today, to direct staff to go ahead and bring something back. So I don't know that you need a formal motion to do that. You've removed those. And then I think staff has enough information to go ahead and bring something back separately in the next batch of amendments. So I think you can just move on to the remaining code changes that are before you.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. So by, counsel, are we, are we good by consensus to have staff work on this and bring it back to us with the next, next batch of amendments?
With just this one item?
Just this one item.
Yeah, the rest of it, we can.
Yeah, the rest of it, we can go back to tonight. Is anyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Does staff, Ms. Lust, feel confident of a direction from us after hearing all of that unfold? Exactly. So I feel like.
We're good.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get there. I, I think, like, we've, there's been, it's been a very robust discussion that I think that there are some areas of commonality that we can work on.
Sure. Great. Okay, thank you.
Like that? Thanks.
Well, she doesn't need to read the word. We, we're gonna go back to, hang on a second here. We're gonna go back to ordinance number 1460, proper. Counsel, any additional questions or discussion on consideration of ordinance 1460? Okay. Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1460, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, amending chapters within Title 18 of the Richfield Municipal Code.
Great, thank you. Counsel, I would accept a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1460 as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Is discussion, point of order, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, point of order. I don't think it's as presented, as amended.
As amended.
Oh.
Yeah.
I would like to correct what I just said, and I would move to adopt ordinance number 1460 as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1460 as amended. Any remaining discussion, counsel? Okay. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Uh, aye.
Councilmember Burkle?
Aye.
Councilmember Wells?
Aye.
Councilmember Favella?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Chipman?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye. Thank you, counsel. The motion passes. And we will move on to our last item, like, last item of business tonight. This is the second reading of ordinance number 1463. This is the approval of the AT&amp;T franchise agreement. Ms. Langs, I said it wrong. Correct me, I'm sorry.
Lang.
Lang.
Yep.
Got it, okay.
It's Lang with an E.
Lang with an E.
Yep.
Got it. We'll go to you, Ms. Lang.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. As you said, this is the second reading for this ordinance. AT&amp;T is in the process of purchasing Lumen's Fiber Operations. The proposed agreement was based on other telecommunications franchise agreements within the city and has been approved by AT&amp;T and has been reviewed by, reviewed and approved by staff. The franchise agreement, ordinance grants to Forge Fiber, 37 LLC, their agent, a 10-year franchise to construct, operate, maintain and repair a telecommunications facility within the city right of way. I would like to note that Mary Dee Pappst is here if you do have any questions. With that, back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lang. Counsel, any questions? Or comments at this point? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Julie, would you please read the ordinance into the record?
Ordinance number 1463, ordinance of the city of Richfield, Washington, granting Forge Fiber, 37 LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company, its successors and assign a franchise to construct, support, attach, connect, maintain, repair, replace, operate and use telecommunications systems or facilities in, upon, over, under, along, across and through the right of way of the city of Richfield, Washington.
That was fun. Okay. Thank you. Counsel, I'd accept the motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 1463 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 1463 as presented. Any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none. Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Favella?
Yes.
Councilmember Wells?
Aye.
Councilmember Burkle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Chipman?
Aye.
Mayor Cole?
Aye. All right, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our business for the evening. We're gonna move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing may come forward at this time. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. For controls over the phone, press star nine to raise your hand and press star six to mute or unmute. Chief Jackson, we'll go to you, sir.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A couple of quick updates from the fire district. We are working on final property selection for a fire station location on the west side of the interstate. And Chief Nor is appreciative of the opportunity to work with city manager Stewart in working with the agreement and the mitigation agreement relative to the tax increment area. So appreciate that. Our other update is, we've kept you up to date on our crisis response unit that recently went to 24 hours a day. There's been some coordination and pieces with us being one of the first units There's been some coordination and pieces with us being one of the first units in the state in this particular arena. So with that, starting on Monday at 8:00 a.m., we will actually be, we're the first endorsed unit in the area. So we will be the first out for crisis calls actually across the county for anything that comes through the crisis line or the 988 system in addition to the 911 calls that we're picking up. So we're anticipating that unit to be busy. It's already been busy. This will be picking up an additional probably eight to 12 calls a day. And there is a backup. We have kind of a unique model, so we'll be the first out for our area, including the rest of the county and the city of Vancouver. When we're not available because we're tied up on a 911 call or another piece, then that will divert to the team that currently exists with C-MAR for their response. So we're excited about the opportunity, and I think it positions us well to get data and see where that program will grow in the future. But we're happy to have that positioned here in Ridgefield for a quick response. So that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Well, we, yeah, sorry, we can't do questions. There's no back and forth. Can you clarify if it's youth or just adults?
Yes, it is for all ages. Our responsibility, it does not have age restrictions, so it is for adults and youth.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, good seeing you, and exciting updates here, so. Excited to have a fire station on the west side again, too. Okay.
Hi. My name is Jean Stemp, and I have lived in Ridgefield and been a homeowner here for four entire years. And I am here tonight to talk about homeowners' association CCNRs. I am aware the city council members are tasked with reviewing new and revised CCNRs and are aware of state laws that govern those rules. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of the existing CCNRs have been around for a long time and may not have been keeping up with the new state laws and changes in laws. I do understand it's probably not the responsibility of the city to revisit these CCNRs, but it is the responsibility of the HOA board members and homeowners to know their rights and responsibilities. One particular law I'd like to call out is Washington State RCW 643857. I did give copies to the clerk. You should have copies with that law, so when you have time to read it. The intent of the law is to ensure that HOAs do not make rules that prevent homeowners from putting in landscaping that is drought resistant, pollinator friendly, or fire resistant. I live in Taverner Ridge. So Taverner Ridge has been around for a while. The CCNRs may be a little out of date. The CCNRs say that every home must have at least 60% lawn as part of their front landscaping. This is an obvious violation of that RCW. Which, and that RCW specifically calls out grass lawns as being responsible for a noteworthy portion of summer water used by households. The law's been in place for several years, but the HOA board members and their management company, Association Management Services Northwest, were made aware of this law earlier this year. Unfortunately, instead of embracing the law and updating the CCNRs, they've worked to try to find ways around it. As it stands now, the 60% lawn requirement is still a part of the Taverner Ridge CCNRs. The board did create supplemental guidelines for what they're calling drought tolerant landscaping. Unfortunately, their new guidelines still require each home to maintain an ornamental lawn. In the case of my home, that simply means they've changed the lawn requirement from 60% to 30%, which still doesn't go along with the RCW. I know it's not the job of the city council to monitor HOAs and their actions, but I wanted to bring this to your attention because elected officials and city workers have put a lot of effort into making Ridgefield an environmentally responsible city. The city has sponsored tree plantings and invasive ivy poles. You've made sure we have tree-lined streets and sustainable roundabout landscaping, parks with wooded trails, you know, encouraged water restriction, water conservation. So I'd like to see HOAs, excuse me, and the citizens of Ridgefield ensure that all efforts the city has been making are carried through into their neighborhoods. I don't know if Taverner Ridge homeowners are the only ones facing this issue, but maybe the city could find a way to remind all HOAs of their responsibilities to the laws of the state and what it means to be a part of the city of Ridgefield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I ask if you have not given your contact information, maybe you could give it to us? And can we have, okay, yeah, gotcha. Okay, thank you. We'll have staff follow up with you on that one. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to give a public comment tonight? Okay, see, anybody online, Ms. Julie?
Not seeing anyone.
Okay, we will close out public comment, and we'll move on to council reports. Is there anybody here who is really itching to go first this evening? Instead of going in a straight line? If not, I'll just call somebody.
I'll go first.
Okay, Mayor Portem.
So it's been a busy two weeks. I have 11 things that I went to in the last two weeks, but I'm not gonna talk about all of them. But one of the things that probably was the most interesting was yesterday when Clyde and I attended the graduation ceremony for our new police officer. And that was a really, those are just such terrific ceremonies when they have them, just really great ceremonies. That was, that was really interesting. And then Saturday night, Mayor Cole and Counselor Davis and I got to attend the NAACP 60th Anniversary Dinner.
Eightieth.
Eightieth, eightieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, 80th Anniversary Dinner. That was also a beautiful event. A long event. It took, it was, what, after 11, before we get out of there?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was way after 11 before we got out of there. But it was also a beautiful dinner. Yeah, we really, yeah, we had a great time. Had some ribbon cuttings, lots of things went on. But anyway, I'll stop with that.
Sounds good. Okay, great, thanks, Mayor Portem. Counselor Burkle, we'll go to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. Had an opportunity to go to AIG Steel Days. They're a big firm here in Ridgefield. And they have made the artwork, which is going to go into the roundabout at Discovery Circle. What was really interesting is they invited the welding class from Ridgefield High School to come out and weld the project together. I mean, what a terrific collaboration between big business and our high school system. When the artwork goes into the center of the roundabout, and I'm not sure when that's going to happen, the art, the welding class put on the very bottom of the structure, welding class of 2025 Ridgefield High School. I think it's just remarkable. And two of the young people that were there welding are going to be hired by AIG when they graduate. So I think it's just a remarkable, remarkable result. Couple of grand openings that I attended, the new Sun Belt rental and the boat and RV storage with a Butts Sun Belt. It's, for me, it's always terrific to see another new business or two come into Ridgefield and open up. Also, the graduation ceremony yesterday for our newest police officer was absolutely terrific. If you've never had the chance and you do, I would highly recommend that you make the effort and go. And that's everything I have to share.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hamilton?
Thank you so much. I've done quite a few things over the last two weeks, but I would be remiss if I didn't first mention that Tuesday was Election Day. And I want to congratulate Mayor Cole, Counselor Favella, Counselor Davis, and myself for now being elected officials, and I'm very excited about it. Counselor Favella and I, on the 26th, did a counselor chat at Seasons, which went really well. And Counselor Favella turned hearts and minds with her knowledge and her spirit. And it was great. It was a wonderful interaction. Thank you to the Jennings who came as well. We did sips of the season with Ridgefield Main Street. I got to pour some wine with Counselor Burkle. And I went to the Ridgefield School District Strategic Planning Session here on Tuesday as well. There were roughly 70 people, so it was students, parents, staff, community members came together to collaborate on a shared mission and vision statements for the school district and reviewed community survey data, engaged with thoughtful discussions. I found it really, really meaningful, and I continue to love to work within that partnership with the city. I think it's really fulfilling, and I'm really enjoying that. So that is my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Favella?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I've had an exciting last couple of weeks, but I spent all of last week in San Antonio so I could watch my son graduate from the United States Air Force basic training. So I want to congratulate him for standing up, coming right out of high school and choosing to serve our country as what he wants to do for his career. And it's very commendable, and I respect his decision, and I'm just really in awe of him. So, anyway, this morning I attended a youth partnership event with Boys and Girls Club, and I recognize that we don't have Boys and Girls Club in North County, nor do we have Boys and Girls Club in Ridgefield. But Boys and Girls Club is really important to my family. My husband and I are monthly contributors to this program. They provide after-school programming, mentoring, academic support, leadership development, sports, arts, all of it for historically underserved and low-income families. But really, any youth can access these services. They do, for some children, they get five days a week of after-school activities plus eight weeks of full-day programming in the summertime. And the most they would ever pay for that is $180 a year. That is minimal when the amount, when the asset that those youth get from these programs is huge. So I'm excited to talk to Boys and Girls Club and see how we can get maybe them to move theirselves up the I-5 corridor and come to North County, because we have a lot of youth here in Ridgefield that would really benefit from that type of partnership. I also went to the Steel Day. That was really awesome, the coffee chat. And yes, I want to congratulate all of the newly elected members that I get to work with. I think we all have unique perspectives and very different personalities, and it blends well. And I just appreciate that we are able to have conversations and really work so strongly together. And, yeah, I like working with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I would echo Mayor Portem's comments about the NAACP Dinner. I thought it was awesome, very well done, very long, but very well done. Tip of the cap to Mayor Cole. His speech was fantastic. And it was, it was a great opportunity to celebrate, and we were there with some of our colleagues from the county and the city of Vancouver. So that was just a great opportunity to really, you know, enjoy some time with them around, you know, a common cause, you might say.
And we were the only city that was invited.
Yeah.
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 Were the attendants.
We did do the wine walk, got to pour some wine with Mayor Cole. The bigger thing I wanted to talk about tonight was the Parks Task Force that I've been working on. We just had a meeting earlier tonight. And we're at the stage where all the cities in the county are gonna start presenting basically some common info so we can be comparing apples to apples. And Mr. Crownheart got our presentation all ready to go. He and I met yesterday, and, you know, we volunteered to go first. And I think that the others kind of left saying, "Oh, man." Because Cory just absolutely crushed it. And he does a fantastic job, in my opinion, already. But a lot of it is reflective of the work that we all collectively do in focusing on parks and trails and open space. And there was a lot of questions about, how do you guys, how are you guys a fast-growing city of the state when you set aside 25%, you know, for parks, trails, and open space? And, I mean, there was a lot of intrigue about what we do. And this, this process is part of what we're doing. But I left with a lot of pride in that part of our city. And I know that my colleagues up here share that as well. But it's a rewarding experience, and I'm looking forward to seeing how it all unfolds. So that's what I got.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Wells?
It's on. Well, I went to about six of these other meetings that everybody's already talked about, but I had one special one, and that was on the 30th, early in the morning, that meeting. Brought the animal out in me. That's the reason I look like a raccoon now. And yeah, eye surgery. And so, and so it makes me, I don't know. I'll take my glasses off. I'm all black and blue.
I didn't notice it before you.
Anyway. So I've been hiding in my cave away from everybody. Thank you.
It's good to have you here tonight. Counselor Burkle?
I would just like to make a quick comment. Mr. Wells actually had a discussion with his wife, and she won.
I was supposed to keep that quiet.
I know.
Okay, thank you, counselors, for your updates. I like, I think everyone else kind of hit the nail on the head. It's been a busy couple of weeks. There's a whole lot going on, but it's probably one of the best parts of our jobs, too. I, too, attended the NAACP Gala with Mayor Portem and Counselor Davis, as well as participated on the mayor's panel at the Chamber of Commerce last week, which is always fun to get together with other mayors in Clark County and be able to kind of talk to things that are happening in our respective cities. On Tuesday, I got the ride with about 15 other kids and their parents on the bike bus. Starts up at Lark Park up over there on Heron Ridge, and we go all the way down the hill to Union Ridge, and that was kind of fun. And thanks to staff for putting together the goodie bags to give to them as well. We made that probably our final official wave, wave event of the year. But that was always a lot of fun, too. This morning, Mayor Portem and I attended the Clark County Prayer Breakfast. I also attended lunch in Boys and Girls Club this afternoon. So it's good to hear that Counselor Favella was in on that, too. Poured wine with Counselor Davis, attended Steel Day. I also got the judge and Ridgefield Art Association Award Show. Got to hand out a mayor's award for that, too. Pretty cool to see all of the artwork in our community. So definitely never shortage of things happening right now. Always a pleasure to serve and do those things. I do want to come back really quick to our youth commission and just share some insights that, you know, just I've been carrying with me over the last week as in the interview. In the interview process, we came up with some standard questions we asked all of them. And one of the questions was, what is an important issue that you see facing youth in Ridgefield today? And there was, there was two answers, I think, that were pretty prevalent all the way through. I mean, like, shockingly prevalent, like, you know, they came up through. Number one was, they don't like the cell phone policy the school initiated. They accepted they don't like it, but that was one. The second one, I thought, was more telling, though, and they all said it in a different way. They said there was this, this culture of negativity or sort of this idea that is in the schools, and this is both in middle school and the high school, where if you think differently or if you were sort of outside the norm of beliefs or, you know, thought processes or whatever, if you're in a minority in that, then you are, there is very much a negative impact on you. There's a lot of negativity goes on in school. And they all spoke to it in their own way. They said it's negative. They said it's not quite bullying, but there is a lot of, you know, people put each other down, you know? And they all attributed around, you know, sort of like the conformity of the majority there. And, you know, that was kind of interesting to me. That really stuck out to me, just hearing them all, like, very much them all speaking about that. And, you know, I took that with me when I spoke at the NAACP because I think what you, what I, the theme I heard at that event was there are some real concerns about some of our civic health right now in our country. And I think everyone's looking at ways to do that. And I look at these young people, and I had a conversation separately from those interviews where some young people were saying, this is, you know, everyone talking about our civic health, and this is, this is how bad it is right now and how tough it is to have, you know, like, you look at, we're in a record-setting government shutdown right now, and it's because two sides can't figure out how to come together and do something. And then I look at us debating colors of white, and I think, you know, we're not doing so bad. I think our civic health's okay, and we can disagree friendly enough. But we have to do more as leaders of our communities. We have to do more to exemplify to them that this should not be the norm that we embody. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of having them for a year in a position where they get leadership training by a really high-quality staff. They get the exposure to us, and we can model that, because I think we really do need to see that because we need to show them like, hey, this is not what it should always be like. And to them, they'll say, this is what we've always grown up with. This is what we just know. This is what we think that politics looks like. This is what we think that civic discourse looks like, where we berate each other and we're negative. And if you think differently, then you're gonna be ostracized. And so I think that what I heard from them also is that they do want a kinder, fairer, more inclusive world around them. They don't want to inherit our divisions. They really want to help heal them. They really want to help heal them. And so I'm really encouraged at the young people we have here that are just going to be representing us as a community. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of how we can help nurture in them what good civic health and good debate and good exchange of ideas really look like. So that's our challenge, council, and staff, and everybody here to model that for this generation, because they really do need that. And I think that that is the key to restore our civic health. So with that, the city manager.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council, the community. Just a few things, first of all, as has already been mentioned, congratulations to all of our newly elected city council members. Well done, and thank you for stepping up and serving. We appreciate it as staff, and I know our community does as well. One thing, looking backwards, the, one of the meetings that was not mentioned was a meeting that the mayor and myself attended with small-city mayors and managers, speaking to the issues surrounding C-Tran and representation on their board of directors, and how that might affect not only representation, but use of funds raised in Ridgefield to be spent in Ridgefield. So a lot of work going on on that. There will be a meeting on the eighteenth of this month to discuss that issue further. So we'll keep you up to date on how that is going. Second thing is, the agricultural lands study was released by Clark County. It is on their website for review. There is a meeting next Tuesday, next Wednesday, thank you, next Wednesday at nine AM, where the county council will get a presentation from the consultants on that study. Certainly, our review of it, we, we have some significant concerns with the analysis itself that we will be sharing with the county as we move on in this process on the comp plan, which you will also hear about next Thursday at your study session, four PM to six PM. We will have a council study session on the comprehensive plan, an update on that, where we are with the environmental impact statement and with the agricultural land studies. So we'll talk a lot more about it next Thursday. Last thing I wanted to mention is, next Tuesday, the city offices will be closed, and because we will be, we will be observing Veterans Day. So there is a Veterans Day ceremony at eleven AM at Overlook Park that our Legion puts on, it's a great event that they do each year. So I definitely want to say thank you for your service to all of those veterans who have served, including yourself, mayor. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, any questions for Mr. Stewart? All right, thank you. Ms. Lang, Public Works.
Thank you. I don't have any updates tonight, but I am willing to take some questions.
Okay, Counselor Burkle has a question for you.
Ms. Lang, can you, can you give me a, a estimated date as to when the art will be put into the roundabout at Discovery?
Yes. The foundation for the artwork is likely to get poured next week, and then installation will likely happen the week after Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right. Mr. Johnson.
I did not have anything else tonight, but I'll answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, you want to give Mr. Johnson any more airtime tonight? We good? I think you're good. Yeah. Ms. Lust.
I do not have anything else either, thank you.
Okay, great. Ms. Notenares.
Um, I do have one thing. It is Make a Difference Month in Ridgefield. We have two activities going on right now, and one is we're encouraging community members to complete bingo cards and turn them into city hall for a prize. And in order to complete the bingo cards, they are encouraged to participate in activities that make a difference around our four pillars, which are acts of kindness, gratitude, stewardship, and community. Those cards are available online and at city hall and around downtown, if you want to participate. The other thing that's going on is a food drive for the month of November. We have bins at Rose Hours in the lobby here at the Rack, city hall, and at Seasons. And the food or other items that we collect will go to the Family Resource Center. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. We'll go to our city attorney. Ms. Janine, are you online?
I am. And good evening, but I don't have anything to report, so just happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney? Okay, none for you, thank you very much. And last, we'll go to Chief Toria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to give kind of some recognition to Tractor Supply. They had a hometown hero celebration this past Saturday where they invited both the Ridgefield Police Department and Clark Callet's Fire and Rescue and Chief Noor to come up there. So they had some crafts and things for kids, but they also then presented both agencies with a donation from them. Their manager, John Crouch, was very, it was the first time I'd really spent any time with him, and it was a really good contact. I also want to thank Mayor Portem, Chipman, and Counselor Wells for showing up there. It was very nice to see you. So, anyway, shout out to Tractor Supply.
Great, thanks, chief, and shout out to Tractor Supply as well, thank you for their partnership. Okay, if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.